Okay, this is Charlene Robinson, City Clerk for the City of Victorville. I call to order the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Housing Asset Successor. I'm going to take roll call. Councilmember Cox?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
All councilmembers are present. And do you want me to read this first? Okay. The first item is ratifying the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 20-011, ratifying the city manager's proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. At this time, our city manager is going to present, and then after the council has comments, the public will have a chance to speak, and we'll let you know at that time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and also for the members in the public. Because this is being streamed over video or voice conference, I would ask that everybody, public and council, mute their cellphones to prevent from background noise cross-contaminating the two speakers that we're using here in conference room here at Victorville City Hall to broadcast this meeting. And I would thank you for that. So, Madam Mayor and members of council, we're here for the special emergency meeting of March 19th, 2020, so a little past 1:35 in the afternoon. And I've prepared for you a staff report along with a briefing on the turn of events that have occurred over the course of the last week. And so the item that I have presented for you today, it carries a recommendation that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 20-11, ratifying the city manager's proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. The fiscal impact has not been determined at this time, but we are pursuant to procedure actually coding all costs associated with this emergency separately, separate from all funds, so that we can properly account and ultimately seek reimbursement once the emergency is complete. In December of 2019, as you are all aware, as we're all aware, severe acute respiratory illness known, now known as COVID-19, was first identified in Wuhan City, China. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Gavin Newsom declared a state of emergency in the state of California issuing Executive Order N-25-20. On March 10th, 2020, the county of San Bernardino declared a local health emergency as well. On March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization officially declared COVID-19 a global pandemic. And on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a nationwide emergency. Since that time, the county of San Bernardino confirmed the first case of an individual contracting COVID-19, followed by a second and a third being confirmed on March 16th and 17th. As of this moment, known to me, there are five confirmed cases in the county of San Bernardino, and that number seems to be changing daily. On March 17th, 2020, I, as your city manager for the City of Victorville, in the capacity as the Director of Emergency Services, issued Proclamation 20-1, which is attached in the information that we sent out just a short while ago, declaring a state of local emergency in the City of Victorville. This declaration gives the city the ability to mobilize local resources, coordinate the inter-agency response, accelerate procurement of vital supplies, use mutual aid, and seek future reimbursement by the state and federal governments, which is critical to successfully responding to COVID-19. Pursuant to Government Code Section 8630, the local emergency proclamation shall not be for a period in excess of seven days unless it has been ratified by the governing body, which is why we're here today. Once ratified, the local emergency shall be reviewed at least once every 60 days until the governing body terminates the local emergency. Therefore, staff is recommending your honorable city council adopt Resolution Number 20-11, which is also attached, ratifying the city manager's proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. In addition to that, council and mayor, I'd like to add a little bit more flavor to what we have actually been dealing with more locally. And for us locally, our world here at the city started changing on Thursday, March 12th, 2020, where we issued a notice to employees on COVID-19 best practices, sanitization efforts, self-monitoring. We also suspended all city-related travel. We also required in-person, we also ended in-person meetings, requiring more meetings to be done like this, whether it's telephonically or by video conference. And there's many other preventative measures that we put in place. Finally, on Sunday, March 15th, 2020, about 12:00 p.m., I did call a mobilization meeting attended by 17 members of the leadership team. That was just this last Sunday, where our objective was declared by myself that due to the city's responsibility to do as much as it can to responsibly and reasonably maintain and preserve a safe working environment, the city must prepare to close its doors to the public so as to do as much as it can to prevent the spread of COVID-19. This was after the city had already initiated a proactive employee and facility sanitizing effort the prior week. That day, we spent pretty much all afternoon, some of us not leaving until 8:00, 9:00 p.m. that evening, where the efforts involved coordinating, first getting to know all of the orders that existed, and coordinating notices to go out, not only to employees, but actually putting notices and making up signs to the public so that we can responsibly handle the inflow, the potential inflow of people to our facilities the following Monday morning. On Monday, March 16th, 2020, we did, in fact, close City Hall and city facilities. They were all closed to public access. We're using our website, which is VictorvilleCA.gov. There's a page there for coronavirus, where we're keeping all of our information and updates fresh, and a listing of those facility closures is actually outlined on that webpage. We immediately instituted emergency policy for telecommuting, trying to make it as easy as possible on the employees to assimilate to this changing environment, which at that time, many employees were dealing with the sudden notices involving school closures. All employees, our employees with family members exposed to or symptomatic, were required by order to stay home. And as you know, we canceled the city council meeting of March 17th, 2020. On March 17th, under authority provided to my position as the city manager in the Victorville Municipal Code, I did issue a proclamation of local emergency. The local emergency was issued for the purpose of allowing the city to better respond to the public health threat to our community. This emergency declaration was issued, recognizing our widespread effort to improve personal hygiene, sanitizing of our public and private workspaces, and the promotion of social distancing, the most recognizable being the closure of our schools. This local emergency has been issued principally to attend to our homeless population and respond more quickly with resources to help that population comply with the same types of hygiene and social distancing advisories we're all complying with. In addition to the emergency declaration, provide, in addition, I'm sorry, the emergency declaration provides our cities with certain indemnities connected to its emergency actions and makes our city eligible for federal and state aid. Wednesday, March 18th, at approximately 3:00 p.m., the Emergency Operations Center was stood up under my direction at what we call Level 3, which is the lowest level that an emergency operations center can operate. I'll commonly refer to that as the EOC. The EOC is located in Victorville City Hall in our upstairs training room with a current operating schedule of Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. A duty officer is assigned and is on call all other days and hours. We will continually monitor staffing needs for the EOC and adjust based upon the nature of our emergency environment. Our EOC has been recognized by the County Operations Authority, and we are connected to the Countywide Operations Center. We currently have two scheduled section briefings each day. The EOC is maintained as a secure confidential environment. The EOC is being led under my direction as the Director of Emergency Services, and in the event something happens that prevents me from performing my essential functions, Ms. Sophie Smith, Deputy City Manager, is my successor, and she's serving as the Assistant Director of Emergency Services currently. Currently, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith has been directed to appoint a successor of her own, to the extent I have to be succeeded. And I would encourage that if I have to be succeeded for some reason, that you ensure that she, in fact, carries through with that direction to appoint her successor while she's serving in the director capacity. The EOC comprises five sections. We would normally call them departments in our normal operating structure, and it's currently staffed with 39 dedicated employees directly serving the EOC. The sections that are represented in the EOC include a management section, a logistics section, an operations section, a planning and intelligence section, and a finance section. Our current EOC objective is fairly straightforward, and these are listed out in not any specific order of priority. First, attend to the need of our homeless population. Second, to ensure all employees have access to what we call PPE, its Personal Protective Equipment, responding to all, respond to all evolving federal and state local orders, and managing and maintaining our workforce readiness. As to our situational briefing, as of this moment, including ourselves, 14 of 24 cities in the county have issued proclamations declaring a local emergency, including ourselves, 13 of 24 cities in the county have stood up their EOCs. This city has rented 22 portable bathrooms, six handwashing stations, and six dumpsters to be located throughout our community at six different locations. That should be complete by the close of business today. These locations will be disclosed to the public after they've been placed. We're actually manufacturing signs in our sign shop over in the public works yard to identify to the public the purpose for those bathrooms and sanitizing stations, both to the public and to our homeless, so that they know, so that we all know their intended purpose. The city is working closely with our nonprofit and homeless service providers to acquire supplies to benefit our homeless community. Examples include rubber gloves, sanitizing products, and thermometers that can be used in shelter. Yesterday, I issued an order temporarily closing down the Greyhound bus office, which is co-located in the Victorville Transit Center, the same building that the homeless warming shelter is located. This has enabled, starting today, the warming shelter to house members of our homeless community 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and reduce the potential for spread to our homeless members by providing them an environment to shelter in place. Our first responders, police and fire, have ordered increased amounts of PPEs for their response to service calls. All now have the N95 masks. The sheriff has announced yesterday that due to court closures, court closures, the deputies that had served the court are now being reassigned to communities countywide, increasing deputy presence in our city. We did have an incident involving one of our engine companies, our fire engine companies, on Tuesday, March 17th. Three firefighters were placed in isolation resulting from their attendance to a service call from a patient exhibiting symptoms. Those symptoms were similar to those identified to be found with coronavirus. Firefighters, the firefighters, and patient have all been tested and we're awaiting the results. As to our staffing levels, we have seven employees telecommuting, 30 employees out sick. Three employees are in self-quarantine. Three employees are ordered quarantined, and 10 are just out for unrelated leave, for a total of 53 employees out. And that is the reason why we're having to monitor and manage the employee counts closely so that we know what resources we have in the event this emergency gets elevated. At this point, that's all I have to share. That concludes my briefing, and I encourage ratification of our emergency declaration orders. I'm available for any questions or comments you might have.
Councilmember Cox, do you have any questions?
I do. So I understand that City Hall will be open to employees only, but not the public, and will continue with the work that's necessary? Is that correct?
That is correct. I will admit to you that-
What about employees, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes. Well, a lot of employees are working in City Hall, but we know employees are working out in the open. We know that the water district has to have employees that's working outside their workplace, sanitary work outside the workplace because of emergency, because of a lot of reasons. What happens with those employees that have to go outside City Hall to go ahead and carry out their duties?
And that's a good question, and thank you for asking it. That's one of our primary focuses with the EOC, is not just attending to the homeless community needs, but one of our objectives is making sure that we have a team here dedicated to acquiring and providing supplies, including personal protective equipment. So that's one of our big orders. So in addition to what they do out in the field so as to reduce the potential exposure they might get out in the field, given whatever it is they're doing, we're equipping them better with protective gear. So that could include everything from, you know, the simple things like hand sanitizers, masks, rubber gloves. And we're actually asking all of the employees, especially those out in the field, to identify what their risks are and identify what their needs are in terms of trying to mitigate their exposures. And as those are identified, we in the EOC have a team dedicated to identifying where we can acquire those supplies so that we can receive them and then deliver them as immediately as possible to the crews out in the field.
One last comment. I have only gotten a couple, or three calls in regard to if there's a dead cat or there's a needed service, who do they call? And I started to tell the, I took the numbers, I'm going to call them back. My first reaction is call the city manager, but I know you're going to be busy. Is there a central number that people call if they demand or require services?
Yes, there is. In fact, we do have the phones staffed. As the doors are closed, we're actually depending much more heavily on our phone system, and our phone system is getting used because of the limited physical interaction.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow.
So the protocol is no different than it would be before, which is to call City Hall.
I apologize.
We have the general number, which is the 760-955-5000 number. But we also have specific numbers to each of the departments depending upon the nature of the call. And all of those numbers are listed on our website, which is at VictorvilleCA.gov.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gomez, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. One of the things that I was looking at with the proclamation to ratify the emergency instances that we're discussing were not very clear as to the term "emergency" and "proclamation" in order for the validity of these formalities to come across. So I'd like to see if Keith Mezzer could explain more in layman's terms what emergency types of directives he is encountering because of our local businesses that are currently closing are really affecting a lot of, not just the food industry, but all other aspects. And so these emergencies are being misconstrued or misinterpreted, but there is no example or explanation. So I wanted to see if Keith Mezzer would be able to explain in layman's terms how this is affecting our local communities and why these emergencies were so needed, besides the fact that we're contextualizing within the homeless society.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And I'll answer the question as it relates to what our focus is with the emergency. Because there are differing levels of government dealing with different, differing levels of responsibility. But here in Victorville, our primary focus has been encouraging all forms of preventative measures to help reduce the spread of the virus. So, for example, we've been promoting the sanitizing and the social distancing. And we've also declared the emergency in large part based upon, while the belief is we've been good at communicating, I think everybody's been good at communicating the social distancing and the sanitizing elements, we've really been focused on attending to that population that likely isn't getting the message, that likely isn't able to shelter in place and control their environment better. So our large focus and a large motivation for our declaration has been to be able to reach out to that population as soon as possible before, to try to stave off a potential spread. But as you speak to things that are affecting other businesses, perhaps such as restaurants, you know, it's important to know that there are different directives being issued by differing levels of government. You know, an example we've seen statewide involves schools deciding to shut down. That's one form. The one form that I think is affecting local businesses is interpretation over the county's health directives. And the county health director has issued an order, and I think the order is fairly clear. And it's certainly clear in its intent, which is to try to promote a healthy environment by, you know, encouraging social distancing and eliminating that potential for public gathering. And so as it relates to the implementation of that, as much as we are doing right now, and this is a role that we're actually coordinating through the EOC with our staff, is promoting that order, trying to create greater awareness from the business community, share with them the language, and encourage voluntary compliance among those business members. And so that's our role right now. That's a constantly evolving situation. It could change again today. And we have a team dedicated to monitor that directly. Hopefully, that answers your question as to definitions of proclamations and emergencies. If that doesn't, then I'd ask Andre probably to elaborate a little bit more as to the code aspects of what those mean.
Please, Andre.
Yeah, the proclamation essentially is just the same thing as a formal declaration by the city. And the code, the government code actually, and the city's municipal code allows that declaration to be made by the city manager. What it does is it basically gives the city manager, who is also sort of the director of the emergency affairs, the ability to basically leverage resources, use resources that he might otherwise not use, and gives him some rulemaking authority and some powers that he may not otherwise have that need to be exercised in an emergency-type situation. One of the other things it does, for example, is provides some immunity. The classic example here is with respect to the Transit Center. We have a lease with Greyhound. We have to now, in a situation like this, provide Greyhound with notice that they cannot use this facility. You know, without having an emergency declaration, there'd be the potential for Greyhound to sue based on our breach of the lease. What this emergency declaration is, is give the city some immunity to be able to do things like Keith is doing right now, which is to accommodate the homeless and to not create any additional liability.
Okay, and do we have the phone number so the public can call in? Would you be able to provide it?
To call in-
Keith, do you have the phone number?
To call in where?
Yes. and the access code is 105475.
And so this phone number that you provided is for the general community to be able to chime in as we are right now, because they're going to have public comment? Because this is fairly new, and I don't think that a lot of our communities understand what's happening right now as we speak.
Yeah, and the interesting part of this whole emergency environment that we're in is even at the governor's level, there are executive orders coming out. And the executive orders that are coming out, of all of them, there are some that are actually changing the dynamics in which we can conduct meetings. And so because so many meetings were being canceled, potentially disrupting the ability for local agencies to transact, even the rules governing public meetings have been changing. So that's why it does feel awkward and different than what our traditional is, which is to be in the chambers next door to where I'm at, to be in the chambers and actually have the public physically be able to view it, and also electronically be able to view it and listen to it. But because of some of these executive orders that are changing, they are actually changing in such a way that temporarily during this emergency, we'll still be able to conduct business and conduct business in a way that promotes the social distancing and tries to encourage support over reduced potential for transmission.
Okay, and then the other question that I have is probably multi-folded. You can go ahead and answer it accordingly. I'm looking at the city's potential mitigation, collaboration, partnering, and narrowly protecting the general welfare and safety for our communities in regards to the morality. And so what that means is, for instance, right now, we're witnessing the communication for the very first time since the declaration and really heavy discussions, which our community seems to be left out. But today is the first effort that I really see implementing something of this nature. How will we go forth into continuing having something of this nature so the community does know what the City of Victorville and its officials are considering in terms of planification? Any implemented strategies, plans going on forth as everything changes, not only from day to day, but it looks like from hour and minute to minute?
Yeah, you're absolutely right about that. And that's what we characterize as a very fluid situation, where we kind of have to monitor the ebbs and flows and go with it. But I think the answer to the question directly, just as the environment for us to meet like this is changing. You know, we are currently evaluating, because there was an order yesterday describing public meetings, we're currently evaluating whether or not we have a meeting next week or just wait until April 7th, which would be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Of course, with the cancellation of this last Tuesday night, we did have to put on hold a number of agenda items, effectively to wait for that April 7th meeting. And if we can find a way for us to do that meeting beforehand, of course, coordinating with your schedules as well, we're evaluating that right now, and we'll recommend to you in short order what we believe is necessary. Mind you, when we did cancel the last agenda, we did look closely at the items to decide if there was anything essential. So it very well could be that, as we decided not everything had to be transacted on that date. It could wait. It very well could be that, at the end of the day, for the sake of not creating confusion more about when meetings are and how they're going to occur, we may just wait until April 7th. That notwithstanding, we're really trying to get ahead of the public relations aspect of this. We do have a public information officer that is assigned to the EOC. Her staff support member is also assigned to the EOC. And we are regularly updating the website. That's one of our primary communication portals, which is VictorvilleCA.gov. We also are promoting the information via press release, via email communication. We also are promoting the information via press release, via email communication, also by social media, Facebook, using our Facebook feed and our Twitter feed. Those are probably the best portals to be used by all of the public to get the latest and most up-to-date information. And in fact, on top of that, we can't dedicate as much time to it as we'd like, but we do dedicate time to actually interacting on Facebook and Twitter. The public information officer, for those questions that we can field, will actually interact and jump into a conversation to try to bring clarity to whatever the issue might be.
Thank you, and for the great contribution to this important topic, I'm going to kindly and respectfully yield and defer my time to my colleagues for their inquiries. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones, do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so my first question is related to law enforcement. I've been hearing some things on various news stations about law enforcement handing out citations instead of perhaps some of the normal things that they might do given COVID-19. What are we looking at here in the city of Victorville?
Well, first, I can tell you that law enforcement, just the number of personnel has increased in part because of the court closures. So they have done things, actually to be even more helpful to the community, we've seen some announcements that for the elderly community and the medically disabled community, some stores are opening hours specifically for those audiences. And we've actually had officers attending those, at least maintaining presence so as to promote additional security for those that are in need of that kind of attention. So we've taken a cooperative approach. In my conversations, nothing have I heard suggest that they're taking an even more aggressive approach. In fact, the approach that my police chief or our police chief and I have discussed, we're very compatible in our approach that awareness is best as to these new orders that are coming out. So we're promoting the awareness of what the orders are, sharing the information, encouraging voluntary compliance is the posture we're taking with all these new orders. Now, of course, with respect to their normal business, that posture hasn't changed with respect to their treatment for emergency crimes, Part 1 crimes, all the way through, I shouldn't, I'm sorry, not Part 1, Priority 1, all the way through Priority 4. They're attending to their normal business as they normally would.
Okay, well, you answered my follow-up question. You already anticipated it, so I'm glad that our law enforcement, by the way, kudos to our Captain Bessinger because he really is community-minded and really cares about how we're getting through this. And I'm so thankful to hear that there's a presence for helping, you know, community come alongside each other during this time. All right, my next question has to do with making sure that we have, our residents have access to the resources they need. And one of them, it just dawned on me that with a lot of businesses shutting down, people are being temporarily laid off or perhaps, you know, laid off indefinitely because of everything that's happening. And I'm hearing that, well, the presumption is that the unemployment office is closed, but I'm hearing that people can't even get online to file a claim. Do you have any suggestions for that or what we might do to help our residents? Because they're going to need resources.
You know, I, at this moment, as we're sitting here, would rely on somebody in my EOC that's not here. Probably the best thing to do would be to have an email sent to us through the city's website. And I can make sure, in fact, it's probably easiest if it just gets sent to me and then I can route it the right direction during this crazy time. My email address is K-M-E-T-Z-L-E-R@victorville.ca.gov. I'd like to attempt an answer, but I obviously don't want to get it wrong in this state of emergency. So I will get that email. I'll route it to the right person and get the best advice we can get, given what is an unknown status to me as to EDD.
Okay, and that's all the questions I have, but when Madam Clerk invites comments, I have a few. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protemmer Maris, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. In regards to this emergency resolution, for how many days did you say it's enacted? And when does it expire? Do we need to re-vote again, or is it automatic?
The emergency order is in place until it's actually rescinded by the council. And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, is that the declaration is required to be reviewed at least once every 60 days, but it stays in effect until it's actually rescinded.
That is correct, and there is a possibility that the governor may even relax that depending on how the whole coronavirus situation evolves. But right now, it does require essentially the council to look at it within 60 days to keep it in force.
Okay, so we need to review it, even though we may not necessarily have to vote on it?
Well, you'll get to vote on it. Basically, it's essentially another ratification within 60 days.
Okay. Secondly, we had discussed prior to this situation, the question of additional law enforcement, and I haven't brought this up to the attention of both Keith, as to what about that master plan being enacted into the budget, even though the budget's in June? Is it possible that we may need additional law enforcement officers, as you and Rick have discussed?
Any more as it relates directly to this local emergency?
Well, I figured since we were discussing additional, maybe this would be a good time to have them, you know, to actually have them begin.
Right, so in the briefing that I had with the police chief this morning, nothing was brought to my attention that suggests us needing anything more than what we've been providing. We're not really seeing a spike or decline in our traditional call volume. But speaking to what the council had tasked me to do back in November, and sadly, the deadline that the council gave me was the end of this month effectively, to have a public safety plan developed, that is something that is being drafted. It's not complete. But notwithstanding that, the council's direction was to develop a public safety plan, looking at not only sheriff service, but also tending to fire, code enforcement, and even animal control. That would be the definition of public safety as we deal with on the local level. And notwithstanding that, the council also asked as a part of that plan that identify potential funding sources to satisfy that plan, recognizing that, given how constrained the budget is currently with respect to the reliance on general fund revenue, particularly property tax and sales tax to pay for police and fire, the council asked for a funding plan to accompany that public safety plan, recognizing that it's likely not able to accomplish an increase in service without some kind of funding plan in place. So to answer the question more directly, I don't believe we would have the funding in place to be able to do more than what we've already agreed to do in the budget. And the sad state of affairs that we're being advised of from the municipal finance perspective of things is that with this emergency and our dependency on things like sales tax and property tax, in particular the sales tax, with businesses closing and people not buying things, it's going to have a fairly significant impact, just as you're seeing the impact on the stock market on the national level, reaching all the way down to the local level. It's already being planned for, and we're being advised to expect a dramatic impact to our revenue generation in the next fiscal year because of this emergency.
Do you have adequate staff at this time?
Yes.
Or to carry out what you've mentioned?
I believe so, yes.
Is there any intent to add additional staff members?
Not at this time.
Okay, those are the only questions I need to have answered. Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, do you have any questions?
Well, I do. Not necessarily questions, because I think all the questions that I have have already been asked and answered. However, I do have some things that I would like to share. Number one, I did receive an email from Jay Obernuth, our Assemblyman, and he stated that there are many resources that are available for people at work and those whose hours have been cut and businesses affected by this emergency. And he also listed the telephone number. I don't know if it's supposed to be this number now, or if this is something that should go to the city. But he did give me that number so people could call the district office and they can actually direct them or assist them as far as those people that are needing assistance for the reasons that I stated. So I don't know if this is a number that I need to reveal to the council members, or is this something that our city manager would like to give out, or if we have that resource anyhow so that we don't have to rely on outside assistance? Do we have that, Keith?
You know, I'm looking through my email right now, and I'm not seeing it, I'm not seeing that I got it. That's not to say that I didn't. I just don't have it in my current active email. But if it sounds like it's really intended for public dissemination, and given that we had a question earlier about who to call, if it's answering that question and considering the fact that we do have members of the public on the line, if, in your view, that's intended to be disseminated publicly...
Yeah, that's intended for the public.
I wouldn't, I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, that number is 760-244-5277.
And who's that number up?
That's Assemblyman Jay Obernuth, District Office.
Okay.
And that's the number that he gave.
Keith, I assume you'll put that on the website as well?
Yeah, and in fact, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind forwarding that to me, and then I'll take a look at it and make sure I don't...
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that you may have it, but of course, we're, right now, we're, how should I say, you know, overwhelmed with so many emails and text messages and everything, you know, but I'm pretty sure, but I'll forward it to you either way.
Perfect, thank you.
And then there is something else. Did you have something else on this matter, this question for me or anything?
No.
Okay. Now, the other thing that I have, of course, this is something that had never even crossed my mind, and I don't know if anybody else had thought about it. I have this family contact me through the city.
Mayor? Mayor? Hang on, Shirley might want to...
We're going to have public comment because we have the public listing in as well?
Yeah.
So do you want to take public comment?
And this would be on public comments with respect to the item, the proclamation of the existence of the local emergency?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't want me to discuss it now?
Well, once we're finished with the public comment, then I think it would be appropriate to provide that information, and you're going to have an opportunity, assuming there's a motion to approve the resolution, to discuss the actual resolution itself.
Okay, very good. Okay, I have no other questions or comments.
Mayor, Shirley, it would be appropriate now to see if there's any public comments with respect to the proclamation.
Okay. Is there anyone on the line that would like to speak during public comment? This might be a little weird.
We'll have to try to do it as orderly as possible, and if somebody speaks up first, let's respect the person that jumps in first, not try to talk over. And it'd be helpful to state your name at least so we know who's speaking into the microphone.
Anyone there that wishes to speak?
Yes, please. My name is Levana Wilson, and I really appreciated hearing that there may have been an opportunity. I appreciate all you all, everything that everyone is doing. Thank you so much in such a time as this and allowing us to be a part of listening and participating in this and just everything that you're making available on the public website. I hope more citizens realize that this is there for us. But I was excited to hear the question about, is this a time that we could get some more law enforcement? I'm actually feeling ashamed that I haven't been a more frequent caller to the deputy dispatch. I've kind of lightened my phone calls. The area where I live, there's a lot of things that happen, and I never know if this is a time to pray, or this is a time to call, or if it's a time to do both. And with the uncertainty of what's coming, I would think that this would definitely be a time to increase those numbers. We are already very, very, very thin. We don't have what we need already as far as law enforcement, and I'm also hearing that the funds aren't there for them. So I would just like to again say if there's a way that we could do that, and thank you for all that you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Anthony Rose. Just wanted to quickly first say thank you for being innovative and allowing us to participate in the meeting. Obviously, as a desert, we should be united in being able to communicate with one another, and I really appreciate the teleconferencing and inviting the public, so thank you for that. The other day on March 18th, we had the three firefighters that were potentially exposed to COVID-19, and I just wanted to make a comment in terms of if it's protocol for 911 dispatch to inquire or ask any questions prior to dispatching firefighters to a potential case, because now it seems as though we might have three firefighters that are quarantined, which is going to affect staffing levels, and we can't really afford to have our specialized physicians going out on quarantine because they've encountered a case. I mean, we have our health care workers facing these potential cases on the day in, day out. Are the firefighters equipped with the proper PPE prior to being dispatched to the resident and call, so that way we're not losing those staffing levels? And then, again, I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've provided and allowing us to participate.
Thank you, Anthony.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Okay, I don't...
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Yes?
I'm sorry, it's Levana Wilson again, and I had time to think of, I don't know if I'm allowed to comment twice, but perhaps this is such a time as this where we can get some more law enforcement. Just rethinking how the things that I was reading about being able to with the different measures that are going to be necessary for supplies for whatever they might be, for reimbursement to happen, maybe this is such a time as this where we can get more law enforcement, and that reimbursement can happen from other entities for the cost of that. Thank you. I'm going to mute it again.
Okay. So at this point, I don't think there's any further comments on this item. It usually is one speaker, and then we'll have public comment after as well. No other comments on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment. Okay, I'll close public comment. And then, councilmembers, I'm going to request a motion in a second. Maybe I'll take a motion first and if someone wants to give me their name who wants to make the motion?
Yes, this is Blanca, I make the motion to move as recommended by staff.
Thank you.
I second it.
Was that Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion made by Councilmember Gomez, a second by Mayor Protem Ramirez. And can I get all those in favor by last name, please?
Actually, Shirley, it would be good now to have some discussion, I believe.
Oh, for comments?
I believe Mayor Garcia wanted to make some additional comments.
That's true, I'm sorry. Okay.
I have none.
You have none? Okay, I'll go back to alphabetical order. Councilmember Cox, do you have any comments? Are you?
Jim, are you there? I think I lost one.
Councilmember Gomez, do you have any comments?
Yes. So my comments are going to be reflected again on the emergency orders and then not just the city of Victorville, which is a local municipality, which we are definitely talking about, but also with the county, the state, and then a lot of what happens at the congressional level, because everything that happens right at the point of spectrum where we stand really does take effect at every single aspect level, whether it's public interest or private interest. And so at these critical times, I think a lot of our local politicians and local dominant groups have a systemic conditioning of looking at our world from a very microscopic, narrowly tailored perspective, which ends up hurting a lot of our communities and a lot of our businesses in terms of what is taking place. A lot of the times, things do get taken out of proportion and with that taken out of proportion, we inflict unknowingly or jaggedly, a lot of our community's fears are incinerated. We create a lot of what we would call immediacy, but at the same time, we fail to understand that it's important for us to discuss things in a fashion where it's interpretive for our listeners to understand that these times are times that...
Councilmember Cox?
These times are times that have not occurred in our past. You know, we've had different situations around the world that have caused economic pandemics as well as economic stresses and this is a very crucial time because if you look at this year, it's not only the presidential year for electing a new president, if that were the case, but we also have the census 2020, which is something very critical to each local municipality at every single level, from state to congressional, because you have not only the appropriations of the lines being drawn, but you also have critical programs for a lot of our disadvantaged communities and populations that may be eradicated when these counts aren't being, aren't forcefully and rightly being counted. For instance, this is the first time in the history of the United States that the census 2020 will be all online and we have several means of contact and everything through online. We have a lot of communities that don't have the connection when it comes to free data or internet connection and that makes it very harsh. Declaration of a national pandemic makes it even tougher when we are going all the way for April 6th with most of our gatherings being closed, people not being able to communicate. And it's been several people's opinions, as well as my own ideologically, that a lot of these things are really starting to hinder a lot of our, a lot of our rights to assemble as a community, our rights to be able to also exercise what we believe within our own households to be something that is not cookie cutter based on something that comes from the higher above. A lot of times, our local municipalities aren't that in touch with the public, we're not at the ground watching everything that's happening and we fail to report back that our role is essentially to come back and be the voice of the community. So these fears and these intimidations are really real, the presidential election, the congressional appropriations of money, everything that's happening globally is really taking effect in the city of Victorville. And it's something very important that I thought I should bring up because it's not just my ideological perspectives, but they're very objective and subjective when it comes to meeting people one-on-one over the last two weeks and I felt that this was a comment that was worth its merit and its worth and gold and weight and hopefully other of you start thinking about what directives we are taking, what are we doing when it comes to our constitutional rights and what does look for a not-too-far future and what the community has already instilled in their minds and how they're thinking about the things that we're doing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox, do you have any further comments?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Hello?
I can hear you.
Okay. By the way, I was, okay, I could hear every word that went on and so only you, I guess you couldn't hear me, but I did hear everything.
Okay.
Yeah, one comment, as you know, I'm involved in a couple of businesses. The workers were under the impression that they weren't supposed to report to work. We had a sit-down and talked to them and of course, we made provisions for them to work. It's impossible to close some businesses and by the way, every declaration that I have read from the state, county, makes it acceptable for working if you follow all the rules. And so I want Keith to clarify that we aren't issuing that businesses have to close. Businesses that have to close are fairly specific in the county Public Health Officer's Order and that's alcohol and gathering places and so on, but that isn't for businesses. They are exempted. They do have to take the necessary steps to protect the employees and the public and vice versa, but I have seen no directive that closes businesses. If you will look around, most of the businesses are still open and a couple of calls that I got is, is the city going to issue a directive in regard to closing the businesses or not? And of course, I can determine, we can't do that. So there's going to be calls on what is the rule for businesses that want to stay open and continue and are not in violation of the federal or state directive. I'll leave that up to the city manager, I know they will do that, but some employees are under the impression they're not supposed to go to work and that in itself is not, doesn't fully explain it and that's not the case.
Yeah, and with the exception of the one for the direct public health and safety relationship to the warming shelter downtown, the Greyhound bus office, which they will continue to operate, they'll actually still allow for pickup and drop-off in the open grounds, not inside the building, in the actual parking lot. So they'll still be able to operate, but with that narrow exception, Councilmember Cox, we're not shutting any businesses down, we're encouraging voluntary compliance, we're actually seeing quite a bit of voluntary compliance because notwithstanding the county's order, and there were some directions in the county order as to certain businesses being shut down, but in notwithstanding that order, I'm not aware at all that county staff has actually gone out and literally forced the shutdown. It's really been designed to create the awareness that there is a public health and safety concern and these are the certain areas that should be closed down, they've even been directed to shut down. It's really within the compliance of the business at this point and that's how we're promoting it.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for the clarification because I know there was some misunderstanding on that.
Yeah, and for better clarification, the last order that was issued by the Public Health Director can actually be found on the County Public Health Director's website. I did send it to each of you individually and I think it is pretty clear, though I do hear that we may get some additional information on that later in the day and as that becomes public, we'll share it with you and the rest of the public.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jones, do you have any further comments?
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam Clerk. And first of all, Madam Clerk, I want to thank you for facilitating this teleconference. It's not an easy task and you're doing a great job. Hats off to you. Thank you. And I noticed that on the agenda, there's nothing, no area for councilmember reports. So I'm going to, I want to make sure that I speak directly to the resolution, but it might be tied a little more loosely to it than I would normally do, so I hope my colleagues will bear with me. With regard to our community member that spoke about having, you know, perhaps a need for law enforcement in the near term, we certainly are working on a public safety plan that has been months in the works and I know that we were supposed to have a plan put forward to the council this month, but with everything that's going on, I'm certain that the council would be amenable to that having to come down the road, hopefully as soon as we can get it. But to that community member and to our public, certainly, I have every confidence that our city manager is working very closely with Captain Bessinger to make sure that we're on top of all this because public safety is huge in the minds of our council, so. All right, and then I just wanted to make known, in case people don't know, there are a number of Facebook pages that are popping up where people are really extending a hand to each other by announcing where they can find certain resources or when certain stores open at certain hours or where they were able to get a certain product that others might need. And it's really a great thing to see everyone really going that extra mile for each other, which is really what we need in these difficult times. And I hope that our governor is going to continue to relax the process for holding our council meetings because council meetings not only here in Victorville but across the state, they have to, they have to go on, cities have to be able to get their normal business done in a timely fashion, so I'm hoping that we'll see some further relaxation of the rules, at least for the short term, so that we can get business done. And I do want to thank our first responders, I think they're in a very difficult situation these days. We have now several that are quarantined because of a 911 response and I am so thankful that they put themselves out there every day, but now with the times that we're in and we're kind of living in a new normal, at least temporarily, that they're really, they're really exposing themselves and I would encourage our community and my colleagues to just keep them in your thoughts and your prayers because we do need them. This is, this is a time where we really realize how important our first responders are. And then I would like to take, first of all, we need to have, we need to ratify this proclamation and there's just no question about it. We have to, we have to be able to get work done, we have to be able to protect ourselves from liability and we need access to resources that we surely are going to need. And it's in that regard that I want to praise our city manager and his staff for their untiring efforts to not only mitigate the threat of COVID-19, but also to care for our residents in a very intimate way and coming alongside everyone during, as I said earlier, these really very difficult and trying times. Mr. Metzler, in my view, is to be commended for his excellence in anticipating all of the needs of our community as well as in all other aspects of his position as a city manager. I am immensely grateful to you, Mr. Metzler. And then finally, I think that for all of us, difficult times can do one of two things, that they can grind us down and they can polish us up and with everything that I'm seeing thus far, I really believe that our working together, we're going to be a more refined community and we're going to be stronger for it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ramirez, you have any comments?
Just a couple. I would say I'm grateful that the city of Victorville has placed its residents as the priority and that we have not forgotten anyone, especially the homeless and the veterans and our seniors, as a fact that we are doing what should be done at the very, from the very beginning. We are not waiting, we are proactive and I find this to be very positive in regards to the direction that our city council is taking. So I am very proud to be a member of the city council of Victorville because we are doing the right thing for the right reason and that is to keep life and to protect life and to provide life. So I commend everyone for their remarks, especially the employees of the city, our city manager and our city attorney for allowing us to be able to do this in its proper and reasonable way. So let me simply say, I feel that we as councilperson are doing our job and I am grateful to everyone else who is helping us to do the thing. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia, you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, I have a second by Mayor Protem Ramirez. So all those in favor, Councilmember Cox, are you in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez, are you in favor?
I am in favor.
Councilmember Jones, are you in favor?
I am.
Mayor Protem Ramirez, are you in favor?
I am.
Mayor Garcia, are you in favor?
I am.
Motion carries unanimously. And then the next, we're just on to public comment, regular public comment. Is there anyone else on the line that wishes to speak? Is there anyone who would like to speak during public comment? No.
Anthony, Anthony, I know that I'm taking some time, but if there's some information, again, as far as the protocol that's being, or questions that are being asked when they dial 911, what preventative measures are we taking to ensure that we're not going to spread the virus by sending, again, vulnerable individuals so that they're then quarantined? Is this a protocol that's happening with the San Bernardino County Sheriff, is it happening with 911 dispatch? Who's handling all these calls and dispersing the information in order to prevent another exposure where we're now quarantining those individuals and then of course, possibly spreading the potential virus? I know it's not, you know, I'm not a resident of the city, I guess, I'm just looking at, I really, again, thank you guys for having this teleconference meeting because it allows us to be together and obviously being, you know, being not able to travel as freely, it becomes, it becomes comforting to be able to have conversations with people in my community and see that you guys are working diligently and proactively to combat this virus. Thank you.
Thank you. There be no further comments? I'm closing the public comment. And that's all we have. See you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, that's all we have for the agenda. I certainly appreciate yours and the rest of the council's time on this matter. Since there's nothing else on the agenda, perhaps now would be an opportunity to entertain a motion to adjourn?
I don't... A motion by Councilmember Jones?
Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously to adjourn the meeting.